But see, I was pushing the others except for a guy that was just. And so when I looked at it again, I was like, oh. And there's one that was five. So I was like, oh, he didn't. I don't mention this. Shoy was like, are you getting through all this stuff? No, the nine, you've seen what they lost. It's the ninety.
Oh, we're not.
You did. Yeah, and and very pretty vision.
So I can create this.
Hey, you made it.
Made it. Do you have any doubts?
Well, you're out in the field, you never know what else. The truck doesn't start, you might convince yourself.
How you doing?
Okay. I want to be at home with my dogs like really. I mean, totally honest.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call. This nice new gavel that. The meeting of April twenty second, twenty twenty five to order. Roll call, please. Or I'll do roll call, how about that? Commissioner Clark.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
I drew. I didn't want to say.
I'm here.
Commissioner Davis here, Commissioner DiMato.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bullburn is here and currently no Commissioner Hazel. And the ex officios are not present. Thank you all for being here. And thanks to Commissioner Riley for reinstituting the gavel.
Yay, plus the the Woodbury, you know.
Yes, yeah, personalized orders engraved on it. Hey. Before we get to brief announcements and staff, can we just look over the agenda, make sure that it makes sense to everyone? And I'm going to propose a just shifting an item. Changing the order. I'd like to elevate Oak Valley. C and make that A. And bump up everything down in order. Because I would hate to subject Jerry to the Highway ninety nine corridor plan discussion unless he really wants to. He chooses to do that. If everybody, if I can get consensus on that or anybody objects, let me know. Any and then. What's that?
Back upon this of valley.
We're we're just going to elevate it to A for discussion.
You don't have any documentation.
I don't think so. I don't.
So we're elevating something ever.
See, yeah, C becomes A and then everything else is just down one one. And so brief announcements by staff.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission, Alex Gable, city manager, pro temp, they succeed. And the lead is Bonnie. Peter. Bonnie is a planner with RB cog and is helping us out. Since Rowan resigning from the cog, Rowan's pursuing her planning career in White Salmon, Washington. So. We're appreciative to have all your support. In terms of announcements, I will share with you that. Council did take action to accept the railroad study findings. They did not move directly to take it at take the that portion. Out of the comp plan at this time, our recommendation as a staff was to do that as part of a future swap. But they did, they did accept the findings and to memorialize the both finding commission. City council thought that the findings were substantive and made sense. And the resolution also noted that. The there were additional comments that suggested the feasibility may be even. Lower probability than the than the city suggested. Just to note. It's a good practice that city council does a look ahead at the end of each meeting. And I thought I might just share with you all what I was thinking about talking to. Chair, the future jet ratings for this model to to you all. We are expecting to schedule a on the mass timber. Go adjustments, just the required portions is what I understand. Well, ready and willing to entertain. I believe there is a work set, an additional work session on the buildable lands inventory that we are due to bring. And Commissioner Clark's shared. Draft updated street tree list that I believe that you all. I'm waiting for Derek's chairs. To let them know that you're ready to revisit the cluster housing topic. But there are others, it'd be great to sort of get them on my on our forecaster. But those are the, those are the ones that are sure of on my radar for immediate upcoming sessions.
Thanks, and thanks for just rolling right into that stuff. It's been a busy. Two months. Yeah. Yeah, well done. So can we, on the minutes, February twenty fifth, has everybody got a chance to review those? Are there any proposed corrections or additions to the minutes? If not.
I'm with approval second.
Okay, I got a motion for approval of the February twenty fifth. Twenty five, twenty five minutes. And in a second. Discussion.
Sorry, that was Shapiro.
Correct, yeah, Riley and Shapiro, Riley on the motion, Shapiro in a sec. Let's see, and if there's a discussion. All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Any abstentions? I abstained. You abstained, you wasn't present, didn't get a chance to listen to that. Okay, all right, and so Davis, Commissioner Davis is abstaining, wasn't present, hasn't followed up with that, so he's out on that one. Okay, public comment on non agenda items. We don't do, this is different, I mean, we don't have a application form for that for. Planning, you just show and. So is I just want to make sure there's nobody online. That might have their. Hand up or or is even attending at all. So can somebody help me there with their Zoom feed? Do you see any attendees? Right, okay. And I'm looking, I'm just looking to the few people in here to make sure nobody's looking to comment, so. And it doesn't look like it, great, okay. There's no public hearings and we're on to discussion items, which we elevated Oak Valley zoning and HOA conflict. To A. So staff, do you want to take that, Alex?
Yeah, and. And he's out. The Jerry Help on behalf of Oak Valley HOA and then.
I'm sorry. Of my my door.
Of Autumn Bridge. One or two section. And they are interested to address you all. As an informal discussion. And so now the. Land agency that they they have concerns about. I'll share a couple pieces of context from staff perspective. One is with Dave Lowman's assistance, I did go back and review, there's a March sixth, two thousand twenty four discussion with city council on this topic. And with both Kristen Mays's recommendation and the minutes. The council discussion reflected there while there was. For the concerns raised, its office was was something that we need to. Out in motion in the grand and city initiative in terms of work. Or comment. And then after the presentation, if we get into a deeper discussion, I might share a little bit about a house bill that's potentially moving this session. It could impact the context.
Great, Jerry, I'll give it one forty Oak Valley. Here in town and my authority would give him Autumn Bridge, Autumn Bridge, that's the society will be there and just kind of clarify one to the one in city council. The night that Ralph entered myself into city council, we weren't really going past you for a fully change. We were initially aware of concerns that we had. And our ambition was that we do a good. Come back to you, we weren't trying to able to stab you, one of these big that perfectly good. We weren't trying to overstepping all around you with the plan, lay it out there and see if it goes. With that. And our two subdivisions, you know, we're all along Bear Creek, there's there's a. Which is well bridge, there were three springs that left between us. And when in twenty nineteen, the zone was changed, those springs remained single family. And we are changing all that. And so that was kind of a question we had, why would that all three kind of went the road like that, why was it one middle? Not me, I don't know, I wasn't really here at that time. But primarily, you know. We started out, Oak Valley. Starts out as a trailer block, like the original blast act in nineteen ninety four. The laws point one, point one two, and a couple that are a little bit larger, mining brackets. I have the mansion, high wall. And it's going to go about itself. And so it feels difficult to put what other than seeing the bank. Our CCNRs made that only single family, single eleven, Smithville, old student building. And then Alex is going to get related, the CCNR situation coming out. But that's been something, our streets are quiet, the city doesn't own the streets, they don't have anything. Anything on streets don't meet the city standards. So you do not allow street parking. Our concern could be a couple of concerns that we went. To a multi-family. They can't, they have the partner right where they lost, if we really had a multi-house on. One acre, that's. Difficult to visualize that within ourselves. The old valley was established in nineteen ninety four, fifty five plus, this information is interorg, it's not, we were out planning to be the product that was determined to be fifty five and plus. And according to article of our CCNRs, that ownership was restricted through residents. We called by pursuit of section thirty six oh seven, the federal fair housing act. And section thirty six oh seven B, and that section, there was one person that there must be over fifty five. And no one under the age of eighteen. And live on the basis, that's the way it was written, that's set up, it's set that way. So if you have a multi-family, I know I was looking for, you know, affordable housing, this type of thing, this would be, you know, the band isn't to get established, get started. And our houses are not that expensive, but they've not left everything else that since we all need the fire itself. You know, they were being done as trailer cars, you know, there were some concerns that. You know, after the fire, we were fortunate that they stay allowed, it was five years ago, it was in September, we were twentieth, third day, compared in the month of September. The the law and as we rebuild, the ability to film. The whole back end. Rebuilds and planning. As we got done. Oak Valley has seventy six homes. Properties in there and right now we have. Construction needs to start, they're in process on. Oh, about sixty four, sixty five, I'm not sure the exact number, it's about eleven or twelve or empty lots. And I've been working real hard, contact with the property owners. It started on construction, because it's basically there in September twenty. The main thing that counts, the better state. Construction standpoint. As your SBCs, we have that, that the elite seven thousand dollars somewhere in there. That holds up in the original well with one or five plus, no matter what happens, so that we need to. But we're trying to encourage them to do build up the single family, because that's what this was conflict was. And the thought that we had was that. Yes, there's places in multi-family, but it's also places for single family that. Single family complex, and this was that free fire, this was a completely built out, completely off the fire. So why couldn't it continue? And but then, but we're not going to ask, originally, we're going to come here tonight, try to ask for various. But then I could talk to the thing and Alex, we realized we did nothing for that, Berettas went there for six months. So that wasn't really do a purpose, what we're trying to do is. You know, what could be the best thing, talking to the art to our lawyer, the idea of an overlay. That's coming. And we're not ready, we're not presenting that, we're not asking for that right now, but we want to inform you that we are going to come back probably. If proof, as the board as a state asked me, what thirty twenty one thirty eight or something like that. If that's passed, then it changes a lot of things, but as it is now, we want to get the warning correct, we want to order the right to react to the owners. For size, word in the process, we're going to ask the employees. So we're going to be coming back, we want to actually know that asking the right overlay at this point. Were the correct approach, but we're not, we don't want to stop something that we wanted to ensure is kind of correct with everybody, you want to work together. You know, it helps greater than that, it really is. You know, I was kind of misworking living in Ashland. But I wouldn't say that because I was laughing, actually, there were actions, you cannot buy actions. And talent is a great little place to live, great place to be retired, we like to have the install house. There's a route brought back that the department has, if we're persisting not performing. Questions that 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 are properly about. You know, that's concerned, we may invest in the vital home. Are they going to be decreasing because we bought on a single mandate? Now we're going to have a multi-family coming in, there's just a question to think about. But mainly, the criteria is these five are through fire, five are being taken down. These were both from bowling, the bottom, bowling, blocking tight, single family, four, they go that way. I mean, a lot of layers, a lot of the baby in the back, we weren't even allowed that. But we're concerned about parking, kitchen, the size of the lots, in fact, it's a thirty five plus. Question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So what was the overlaying?
Just on our subdivision of Oak Valley. It would be over that, and what allows, you do with all the way to say, down here, it's still a multi-family, I'm trying to simplify this, I should kind of help me. And what we're going to do, we would ask, say, move on the follow that, that can't change, state has state mandate, we have to do this, we understand it. The overlayer allow just. The Oak Valley subdivision. And the Autumn Ridge subdivision. To say that you can still build a single family.
I can, so go ahead, Shapiro.
So they're wanting to mandate that you do the multi-family now?
No, that's because of.
So so the existing, it's high density residential, the existing.
Right.
Because it's a massive statement, correct?
Well, so if I could clarify, so the the existing zoning, which was pre-fire, does not allow single family residential.
Oh, but it is.
We, the, those, primarily, right, prior to fire, it was, it was non nonconforming uses. We allowed like for like rebuild post-fire. The the state would not allow us to prohibit multifamily on that. And the state does not require us to prohibit single family. What the state doesn't allow us to do is to have only single family zoning in our low density residential. So there there is actually. Not currently any real deal here with the state, because when the state passed HB two thousand one, they prohibited HOAs going forward. From preventing single family residential. There's a bill in the current legislature. That would be retroactive. And say HOAs that prohibit single fam, those CCNRs covenants and restrictions that prohibit zero, the single would not. Would be in a. Uneffectual, they would, we'd get rid of them. So I I just to make clear, I I think that eliminates one of the arguments that Jerry's presenting, right? One of the arguments is. The combination of the HOA and the city zoning would effectively prevent any development. After we get September. That would not be the case if this bill passes, there are other arguments that Jerry's making, obviously, that 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 doesn't impact.
Well, when I want to announce the conflict, I live in Autumn Ridge. But I don't understand what happened in twenty, so did the state law change in twenty nineteen? Or did the city talent rezone those neighborhoods?
It was Latin, city talent result.
And you couldn't really know why, it was because it was a, they were completely developed, they weren't even any empty lots, I'm just. Because I wasn't on the funding mission, I have no idea why.
Yeah, and I can't recall why that was, so it was part of the title eighteen seventeen revisions?
Seven, so it wasn't.
We're talking about the twenty nineteen reason.
When it was, when the zone was changed in all.
High density?
Yeah.
And so. I don't. There, there's no way that we handle a rezone to high density, was there the, or I don't, if it wasn't part of title eighteen and seventeen, their visions?
Do you think it would have been, I. Yeah, I I think it would have had to be. Research, sure, I can share.
So rezone, so twenty nineteen.
Very different things. That's why, that's why we've been told that the state wanted all of this. Change around the whole state and part of the zoning. And that the cities didn't have to go long, but I felt, well, some of the information I read, the cities were kind of saying. I'm I could be wrong.
Right, let me, let me ask you, how built out are you again?
We have, we only really have letter twelve empty lots, no construction started.
And the problem with. Right to. What do we call it? Post fire, right to like for like, like for like, thank you.
Right.
The problem with like for like is what those people have moved on, so there's no like.
Our concern would be, we would hope that, and up to this point, we've been allowed no life to life, even though it's all good, it's. You know, we've been allowed to rebuild both lives.
But it's a September deadline, what's the problem?
You have to get. So you have to do like for like.
It was private intention to state gate, which ends in September.
So if you don't get those people to rebuild by September, then you're. Looking at people, risking that people will do multi-family in those lots, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, go ahead.
I do like clarify one thing, no. At least in Autumn Ridge, how it was been, even though it was, they have this exemption for five years. If the original property owner who lost their house in the fire sold their lot to someone else, that new owner had to build multi-family housing. So in our neighborhood now, we have some mixtures, mostly they put apartments on top of the houses. But if you were the original owner and you wanted to build back, you could build a single family. But if you sold your lot, that new owner had to conform to that, at least in Autumn Ridge, that's what they, that was their.
Oak Valley, I said, a lot of people have gone back. So one thing that we were looking at too was. Was the city allowed, I think Jamie was saying that.
Yeah, perfect.
And she was pushing to avoid getting to that, without that, and all that time period. And if this, as we're getting closer to the end, maybe we come back and request a near extension. Life for life. Just to give us, that happens at that point.
Right.
Still have a temper.
That that was what ran through my mind, because there's nothing the state's doing, it's prohibiting like for like rebuild.
It's it's our. I think it's our state of the market, that that.
Then, and if I could clarify, so there are two, there's the state's declaration and and our executive order. The state's declaration expires on September twentieth, I think the expectation is that we are going to consider sunsetting ours at some point soon. But it doesn't actually have a sunset date.
And so you were concerned, Jerry, just so I'm sorry to back up on this one, and. You said. The parking, the size of lots, and a. It's decided plus, but but we're talking eleven or twelve units, I mean. Do you, I mean. You would, wouldn't you be surprised if somebody went down there to build something other than a single family home?
Well, right now, with our CCNRs and our protection, they were not approving the less than.
Right.
Saying slowly.
Okay.
And but that, this bill passes, it's saying you can't do that.
Yes, right, okay.
Makes it all, since you all, since you're all. Then you can't have something to say to your home, we did this. And so we, we, yes, we're pretty working hard, I mean, you know, the first pull would hit in the last.
Sure.
And like everything, it's crazy, I mean, we talked about that. But we're really trying to, we just want to ensure that people can get in there and move well, lock it all, where do they go, they can still rebuild. Some of the family, and I don't, I don't know that you have the ability to. Give us that extension, that's something, if we can't get something settled pretty well, then we would be questioning that, I'm not.
And then one more follow up, has anyone informed you or anyone with knowledge informed you on? That the non nonconforming status or nonconforming aspect.
Ralph has a doctor tonight, and he was the one that's just common, people have that. And I'm not sure. I don't know.
Because we're rebuilt, let me just kind of show it, because the reason I ask is because. We've rebuilt like for like, we've rebuilt nonconforming, I would be really surprised if, and you know. If somebody said, oh, your home's worthless because you're, you have a nonconforming aspect of any kind, whether it's the home or, and you know, whatever it might be, so.
You can correct me, but what I understand you said. They built with this in mind, and the house burned down again after this now, I mean, we've gone this way after life. And in the future, someone had a disaster. Would there be, would you not be able to build with a single family? That's sure.
Yeah, that's a good one.
And I don't know, because Autumn Ridge. Was under the impression that they they could only build life to life if you were the original owner. Once you sold the lots, there's a lot of houses in Autumn Ridge now that have the multi-housing on their lot, because, and so I'm interested, it's interesting to hear that Oak Valley. Was under a different impression, so I don't know if it was because of your CCNR, but that is what Ralph's concerned is that. It's now will be nonconforming, therefore will reduce the the value of the houses, somehow it would, it will affect that.
Well, I could see, certainly, we've run into this on gangness, you know, where people are open arms, so we're like, well, that's how it was there before, now they're building up to RHD standards and we don't like it. So I could see others in that moment, somebody's like, this is less desirable to me, but. I don't, I would be surprised if, over the long term, it's like, oh, we definitely see a square footage decrease in in a nonconforming structure at this. Yeah.
And just to be clear, there there, there's illegal nonconforming uses and legal nonconforming uses, and this would be a legal nonconforming use, so I think there's less of an issue there. But I think that to the extent that there is an issue, it would be lenders looking at, right, you're lending on the home. They require you to have homeowners insurance, right, so they confident you could rebuild that home, and and so they're they're fully secured. I think there'd be some question if they're fully secured. If if the, you know, value of the replacement. Rebuild. Wouldn't actually get you a rebuilt home if the city wouldn't permit it.
Right, and so, so now the city could tackle that as far as like. Catastrophe impact, we had language in there. Right, and so, so now the city could tackle that as far as like catastrophe impact, we had language in there, I thought. Prior tell me that that was, uh, related to catastrophe on rebuilt stuff. But the state wouldn't mess with the city on that, or?
Correct, there, there's, yeah, nothing, nothing the state is doing that's forcing us to prohibit single family.
I was just, I'm sorry.
You know, I'm, that was what I had been told. But if, if you can, you can have the ability to do anything, I, I feel like there's support, you know, you know, they did it, keep things in sense. I, I, we want, we want to know that we won't be looking at this whole way, and we, as this is going, this is moving pretty quickly.
This, this, um, this, yeah, D, our DLCD representative told, uh, told me that his impression was that this house bill had a good chance of being passed. Again, that doesn't change, that doesn't address all these issues.
So we would like to look at that and then think about that, because of all, we won't be, you know, we're, we're getting into that, so. Cause if you, my impression, I'll say, well, I don't go a life to life, but if you have the ability to do that yourself, planning permission, well, we can get extension, at least we face. And that little bit of your thought, we'd be a little bit further in.
And to be clear, we'd be making a recommendation to council there, you know, the authority, deciding authorities, something like that. Yeah. So, well, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
For showing the time.
Yeah, absolutely, thanks.
Okay, B. Highway ninety nine, word was planned.
Great, thank, thank you Chair Volker, uh, members of the commissioners. Uh, I'll, uh, skip a lot of preliminaries and encourage Chris Green from OTAC, who's been the primary contract planner, uh, doing this. TGM supported work on behalf of the cities. Chris, yeah, I'm ready to take over.
All right, thank you, um, yeah, so, um, I am joined here by Kathy Klesik from DLCD. Um, and presenting on the highway ninety nine, Bear Creek revisioning process, so this is. Project that's been going on for a while and excited to be kind of at the home, home stretch with this group, so. And they've got a lot on your agenda, so it'll be, we'll try to go through this, uh, quickly, and I also want to make sure that there's, you know, time for questions and. Any comments, um, about the proposal. Um, we do have a, a hearing coming up on the twenty eighth, so this gives kind of a chance, you know, for the commission to ask some. Questions and, uh, learn a little bit more about the proposal. Um, I'll give a really quick project overview and just kind of a recap, because this has been. Um, it's a two phase project and we're kind of nearing the end of phase two, so there's, um, been a lot that's. On previously, some of the strategies for the corridor and really kind of talking about the, the why behind some of the, um. Policy and, um, code amendments that are in the recommendations. Um, and we'll talk about those a little bit more and, and some of the next steps. Um, so talking about the project, I'm going to have Kathy talk about, uh, the TGM project. And.
Good evening, planning, talent, planning, planning commission and, uh, city staff. Um, I'm Kathy Klesik and I am, uh, DLCD TGM representative, so, um, TGM. Projects all have a transportation relation, and so the TGM program is very much, um, kind of the helping hand to. Make cities and, uh. Visions for the future of city centers and livability come to, come to light and make those connections. Between transportation and increased livability, creating places where people can walk, bike, take transit and drive where they want to go. That creates a vibrant and livable place where people want to live.
Yeah, so this, um, this project is, uh, TGM program, it started in, I was really kind of. Um, brought about by the Alameda Fire and, um, looking at, you know, guiding rebuilding of some of that land that was impacted. Um, the specific area, and I'm going to show a few different kind of versions of this map. So this, you know, extends through Phoenix and Talent along highway ninety nine. Um, and then, this figure kind of shows. Just a moment.
Can I say something nice, isn't like, it's like, when the screen's behind us, like, most of us, I know, well, is it gonna be on?
Hang on, hang tight, sorry.
Sure.
Yeah, Chris, Chris is controlling what's being shared here.
I'm just trying to enlarge it.
So Chris, uh, when you get to the slide that you, you want, uh, if you could go into presentation mode, because we're seeing all preview, we're losing a lot of.
Okay, sorry about that.
Sometimes Zoom jumps things around and you end up sharing the wrong screen than you intend to share. So, thanks for bearing with us, everybody.
Is that now showing the?
We're still seeing the same one, yeah.
Okay.
Now we're seeing the screen that you're about to turn into presentation. No, your, your presentation is jumping to a different screen and we're staying on the same screen, sorry.
Okay.
So, uh, Chris, if you go, go, if you double click that screen that you want, and use the icon down next to the zoom slider. Think that'll get you what you want.
Is that, uh, full size?
You got it.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that. All right, so. Uh, yeah, so a few different views of this area, um, you know, between, or, uh, including Phoenix and Talent, um, along highway ninety nine and Bear Creek. Um, this shows, um, the study area and. Kind of in relation to the yellow area, which is the city limits of both of those cities, and I wanted to kind of mention, um. This, this project, um, it comes right up to highway ninety nine and actually looks at. Land on both sides of highway ninety nine and, and, um, the entire corridor. Um, and then the Bear Creek Greenway is a key part of it, um, we're looking at land right up to the. And the frontage of the greenway, um, but there are other plans that are going on as well or that have gone on, so, um, there's a. A planning process called Envision Bear Creek that deals specifically with the greenway itself, and then, um, ODOT does facility planning for. Um, highway ninety nine itself, and so. Despite the title of the project, we're really looking at land use and development that's going on between highway ninety nine and the greenway and what, what happens in that area. And then also really focused, uh, Jackson County is a key partner in this, um, that part of the corridor. Is in unincorporated area, but this really focuses on the areas that are in, um, both of the cities as far as like where our study areas that we're looking at.
Hang on for just a second, Chris.
Sure.
Is it possible to have this projected up here?
It's not.
Okay, all right, I just was trying to accommodate the people sitting out there that don't have a laptop in front of them.
Okay.
Here you are.
Um, so really quickly, phase one, um, so it started in late twenty twenty two, took place mostly in twenty twenty three, and then we, um, did kind of a, um. Check in presentation with each of the jurisdictions in early twenty twenty four, so, and there's quite a bit of community engagement in that process. There were two committees, the CAC and the PAC that have been involved throughout, so the CAC is the Community Advisory Committee. And the PAC is the Project Advisory Committee, so, um, the Project Advisory Committee is predominantly made up of. Agencies, regional service providers, um, larger organizations that are going to be affected and that are other stakeholders that aren't, say, the cities or the county. And then the Community Advisory Committee includes, um, residents, property owners, small businesses, um, folks and. Um, nonprofit organizations, but kind of, uh, broadens that, that, uh. In a representation of, you know, people within this corridor area and, and their interests, um. There were placemaking workshops, um, that took place, um, in twenty twenty three, and then a whole series of technical reports that really guided some of the. The recommendations that came out of that, so looking at things like development feasibility and the comprehensive plan and code of both cities, yeah, things like that. So phase two is really kind of taking that next step, taking that vision, um, developing some code and policy recommendations to, um, implement it. Um, and refining those along the way with, um. Those committees and community feedback, and then groups like the planning commission, uh, and help, help get into the details. Um, some of the engagement for phase two, um. So we had a online survey that was open in March, uh, February and March, um, and those committees continued to meet. There's also a project management team that's, uh, city staff, um, from the jurisdictions that are involved, so. Um, that was a part of it as well as, um, some in-person community events in, uh, February, so, um, we had. Um, a chance to, um. Talk to folks at a open house at the Talent Community Center, and then the Heart of Phoenix, uh, Community and Economic Development Fair, and. Really tried to encourage, um, you know, either of these events we had material and ready to talk about. Both cities and Jackson County, so, um, you know, we got to, we got to both places, but also, um. I wanted to, um, give, give folks a chance if they weren't, you know, it wasn't specific to either one of those, uh, cities when we were. Having that outreach. Um, so between that outreach, um, some of the things we heard, but also especially, um, you know, guidance from some of the committees and looking at common themes that emerged from phase one. That we continued to hear support for in phase two, um, really kind of five, uh. Strategies for the corridor, I would say, came, came together, um, and this kind of helped us group. Um, really what we were trying to, um, achieve in some of the recommendations and, and kind of help. Um, consolidate the, the, the purpose and the why behind some of the recommendations. Um, so I'm going to go through those, um. In a little bit more of an overview, but, um, we looked at these, uh, these kind of five strategies. Active uses along the corridor, um, focusing on some key hubs and bringing community and development in. Uh, housing variety and, and especially within walking distance of the corridor, along the corridor. Um, meeting the corridor with pedestrian friendly design and then, um, better connections to the, the greenway. Just a very quick, because I've got kind of a simplified view of this, but you can see there's a lot of different zoning districts, um, in this. Um, stretch of talent along, along the corridor here. And then, a little bit further to the south, this mostly covers, uh, outside of city limits, but you see a little bit more talent up at the top there. Um, but the key kind of. I guess, you know, sort of a, maybe, uh, whoops. Simplified way to look at that is that there's kind of these different stretches, so there's, uh. A s- area where it's mostly central business district zone along the corridor. Um, you know, talent has the CBH zone, so, um. Commercial business, um, with this little more highway oriented, and then, uh, general commercial. Um, and commercial highway zones that you see in orange there as things move a little bit further out, so there's really kind of. Within that, different areas of the corridor and different, um. Different rules apply in those areas, and we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit in a few slides. Um, so the first strategy, encouraging active uses along the corridor, so, uh, really the idea here is to try to make things, uh, more flexible, have, um, different destinations that. Um, people can get to, you know, Kathy mentioned transportation is a key part of this, so looking at ways that, um, people can get to things. Closer to where they live or where they work or where they, um, you know, are, are just. Enjoying life or shopping or anything like that, having those activities closer together. And some of those more active uses and especially pedestrian friendly, uh, uses do tend to benefit from being clustered together where there's not as much travel between them. Um, and then it helps with, um, having, uh, places for, um, more of a customer base, so if there's more employers, for instance, along the corridor. Um, that's, that's a, you know, longer customer base during the day for other types of businesses, brings more activity to the area. Um, and so that's kind of the general concept, um, some of the recommendations, so looking at things like, um, Talent Maker City was a, something that we looked at, and. You know, is that, um, you know, model that there's potentially more, um, demand for in the future. Um, looking at some of those kind of lower, um. Lower intensity kind of production or maker spaces. Having pedestrian oriented uses, making sure that, um, those are allowed, and then. A lot of the recommendations in this are about process, and so making it easier to, um. Have those uses that are really, um, kind of fitting in the center or a key corridor of the city, um, without, um. You know, as much, um, uncertainty around their process and things like that, so. Um, predictable and objective development standards that, um. You know, are easily understood, um, by the, by the community and by people that are looking to user develop places and, and kind of having that. Having outcomes be a little more understood, um. Another, a couple other key pieces of that, so supporting, um, and, and this is. Um, generally pretty, pretty well supported in the code, but also one of those uses that may have had a tougher time, um, getting developed. But supporting, um, public and community oriented uses, so, you know, civic buildings, um, schools. Um, things like that can bring a lot of activity to the center of a city and sort of supporting those, and then also looking at. Um, auto oriented uses or uses that are less active, so the two kind of ones that come most to mind here are drive through, uh, uses, and then, um, self storage. Uh, was one that also came up as, um. Typically one that's difficult to, um, engage with, if you're walking down the street, there's kind of a large blank wall, because that's kind of how it has to be for that type of use. There's not a lot of, uh, employees or anything going on there, and so you get these sort of dead spots, uh, along the corridor, and so. Um, you know, recognizing that that's a, a service that people use, but that there's places like along the corridor that. Might not be the most ideal spot for that. Um, second strategy, um, bringing the community and development to key hubs, so, um, this really kind of focused on the policy side and, and making sure that. For residents and, uh, visitors, you know, people coming from throughout the region or elsewhere. Uh, but especially, you know, people from in talent, that this is a destination to go and a place to kind of, um, enjoy the community, and so. Um, looking at new civic spaces, um, there's some pretty key nodes and catalytic sites and really. Making sure that those areas are, are set up for, um, these kind of active uses, um. And that there's just kind of a sense of fun and, and gathering in the, in the part of the city. Um, and so the recommendations from this, again, these are all. And so the recommendations from this, again, these are all policy. There isn't code recommendations around this one, but you know, talking about the corridor is an extension of the city center. So there is a very clearly downtown area of talent, but looking at those close by areas of the corridor especially is really being important to that downtown and sort of an extension of it. Looking at places where gateway features might make sense to really let people know that they've arrived and kind of give that sense of a landmark. Public and civic spaces. And then just encouraging places to walk. And, you know, park once strategy has been talked about. Having a place where people, if they are arriving by car, they can park their car and then very easily get around that area. Strategy three, so housing variety within walking distance. This is really looking at, you know, the housing, housing needs in the community and definitely, you know, in terms of rebuilding after the fire, making sure that there's a variety of housing available and that there's housing that's you know, close to the corridor that's, you know, and we say within walking distance. You know, really thinking about like right. You know, within that kind of study area, that area between highway 99 and the greenway especially. I know that there is like longer, longer walks to get places as well, but you know, looking at different housing options in that area and really kind of bringing those into the the middle of the city. So some of recommendation, allowing diverse housing types near the corridor. Looking at residential uses in the commercial and downtown zones and ways to make things like adaptive reuse of buildings for residential easier and just more flexibility in terms of, you know, where a commercial is located in a mixed use building, for instance. Pedestrian oriented housing developments, so having a housing that goes in where people are able to you know, walk to a lot of places or or ride a bike to make some other trips. And then that also brings in things like customers for some of the businesses down there and more activity to the area. And kind of strengthens that overall activity level in the in the center. Probably where the most extensive on the code matrix, if you're looking through that, probably the longest stretches in this or strategy. So this is meeting the corridor with pedestrian friendly design. This was something that in both Phoenix and talent, there's you know, variety of zones. And you saw on that earlier slide, there's a lot of different zones that are right along the highway 99 corridor in this area. And so a lot of the kind of key design features may be in place. They may be required already by code and say the central business district. Zone in talents, but looking at how does that apply more uniformly across the corridor so that it's not as inconsistent. And so that that idea of the corridor and the downtown really connecting and and helping each other works out, but in a way that also recognizes that the downtown and parts of the corridor, there is differences. And so this slide just kind of shows it's not any specific location, but just sort of a typical highway corridor design approach and some of the results that sometimes come out of that. So you know, those large continuous blank walls on the ground floor. Parking between the street and the building. You see not a lot of trees or green space either on the sites themselves or along the streetscape. And then just kind of a, you know, not a lot of sidewalks, very difficult to kind of make make a trip unless you're in the very right spot to make that that trip by foot. And there's kind of three areas that are highlighted on both of those slides. So streetscape. So what happens, you know, in between the buildings and and the street itself. Building design, so how the buildings look, but really how they look in terms of things like scale and what's going on at the ground floor of the building. And then site design. So how are people able to move through the site? Is there green space or a tree canopy or things like that on the site based to ways to walk and easily access site. And so this is kind of more what those recommendations and recommended amendments would be encouraging along the corridor itself. So the recommendations in in that section really focus in on those three areas and they're actually the the proposed code for that strategy is organized around those those three areas of building design, site design and streetscape. You know, in order to do things like, as you see here, there's a large building, but broken into smaller pieces, having trees. And different amenities along the streetscape, things like that. And then the fifth strategy, connecting the corridor and the Bear Creek Greenway. So thinking about the greenway. Both as a destination, it's a nice place to be out in nature, recreation space, but also potentially as a travel route that helps, you know, people get you know, travel through talent. You know, in a nice, nice kind of facility that's there. And so one of the biggest things with that is making sure that there are places to access the trail and that the trail or the greenway itself is a place that people can get to from a variety of different spots so that it's close to their destination. And so looking at making sure that as for instance, development comes in, that there are access points provided with that development rather than development happening and it sort of blocks off potential points of access to the trail. So some of those recommendations, really looking at transportation plans and projects and where there are opportunities to make improvements through the through kind of targeted public projects, but also that when there is future growth and development that through pathways are, you know, provided. And if there's a long enough interval so that people have a way to access the trail, enter or leave the that section of the greenway and and then that there's really strong connections between the greenway and the highway itself, so that people can kind of make that. I guess I'd say it's east-west travel more easily. So those are the five strategies. I kind of went through those pretty quickly. I meant to mention on a lot of those, the slides with the concept for each of these, you'll also see sections of the amendments matrix. So you can you know, compare those to different sections in the matrix for a little more detail, but I would love to hear questions or comments. Kind of an opportunity to refine the recommendations and kind of get a sense of what some of the thoughts of this group are.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it. I actually expected you to kind of roll through more code language stuff, but or will you handle that or is somebody else?
I can.
Mostly be framed around, so.
Yeah, I've, I can, I can roll through some of the the code language if that's
I apologize. I had my camera off too. I'm sorry about that. I didn't realize.
Before we just, Chris, before you roll through the code language to start with, I would like to just say and ask Chair Volkart. How would you like to do this? I think going through line by line might be a longer evening than anybody has on their agenda. So if you have questions about a particular piece of the amendments or the recommendations, I think that that might be a better approach. Maybe not. It's completely up to you, but I just want to make sure that we're using your time as wisely as we possibly can.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we have the time to do a line to line approach. Actually, I wouldn't mind that, but I don't think we have the time for that tonight. So so I do think that's correct, that maybe just start with a few questions. Before I go to Commissioner Riley, let me, let me just set. I just kind of want to frame this so you guys understand too. One of the things that jumps out to me is there's a lot of talk of clear and objective standards and predictability in here. Which is surprising to me because in 2019, we wrapped up over a year of code language changes for our title 18 zoning code and title 17 subdivision code. A very arduous process that D L C D blessed. And so it's understand that for me, it's just, it's a, it's a I understand this to a degree of why this is being done and and the benefit of it, but it's also a bit of a puzzle to me when we're rewriting things that got the blessing from D L C D as clear and objective. There were two, our, our, our goals were to remove barriers to development and to create clear and objective standards. And so now we're, I'm seeing language being removed that that met their thing. So that's just one thing I wanted to cover. And then I'll turn it over for other questions to, I think Commissioner Riley has maybe a few. Also, I want to, before I do that, I want to apologize too for or I might have some unimportant questions tonight because I just I messed up and didn't look at this packet until late. And so so pardon me for that. And yeah, and I'll, I'll hand it to Commissioner Riley. Thanks for your patience.
So I, I spent probably more than six hours going through this and I, I made it a word document. So I have a lot of questions and comments, but I only got halfway. I don't even think I got halfway through it. And so I've never gotten used to talking to the sky all these years and I'm still like anyway, so I anyway, so so I, I'd have a lot of detailed questions and I'm worried about the schedule that you've got laid out like we're supposed to talk tonight and then you'll come back with recommendations in a public hearing. And I, I feel like these are really huge changes that need more public involvement. And, and so there's that part. I don't think we could even start to get through it tonight. I feel like I feel like I would like to schedule another meeting where we can just, just do this. And do like a line by line and ask questions, but it, but part of my problem with this is the format of your matrix and that's, I had to, I had to use my book and and two screens to try to, to understand the context of your changes and it still was really difficult. And so I can keep plowing through it, but there's got, but usually when we're rewriting code, we're looking at the code with the strikeout right there from the old code and then the new code. But, but a lot of, so many of your changes are, recommendations are about changing types. And I really don't understand how that is going to make a more pedestrian friendly highway 99.
It's like Kathy answered that.
Well, I'm, uh, thank you for that, those questions and that was comments. And I will 100% agree with you that the, the matrix is a challenge to look, read through all the way through. Chair Volkart, I would just say that to your credit, all of the work that you have done previously, much of that and many of the changes are reorganization and consistency. And so taking some of the work that you have already done and and moving it into a coherent place that fits the requirements of today. And so it wasn't that like all the strikeouts don't mean that all of your previous work we've now set aside and we're redoing it. We put it in a new place. And tried to make it follow in, in a different way, in a way that was clearer and more easy for staff to follow in a process so that it is an easier process for applications and applicants. And then for staff, the staff side to handle. I'm going to let Chris take the, the question about the, the, the next question.
Uh, yeah, but the review type, so some of that is just in terms of, I guess, making a place, you know, develop, like you had mentioned Chair Volkart about kind of development friendliness. And so there's a lot of, a lot of the and how things were sorted amongst those different types. Things were pretty, there were some things that were narrowly defined or there were some things like certain types of commercial or housing that would be, I, I would say pretty typical in a you know, downtown area or a commercial corridor that would have required or do require like either a public hearing. Some things require you know, notice and administrative decision, but it's mostly that the bulk of, the bulk of the range of uses that would be typical and something like that in the current code is in that type three. So really into the going through a public hearing and that leads to a lot of time and uncertainty in that process and and it can be pretty discouraging for somebody to know, you know, if I'm if something like, you know, restaurant is encouraged in an area, having to go through a public hearing process to build something for that. Kind of sends, I guess, the opposite message. And so you know, making it so that those uses are a little more straightforward. And still meeting, you know, standards about you know, design and and where and you know, where and how they can be located on the site and things like that, those development standards. It gives people roadmap to create those uses in your downtown and your corridor.
Thanks, Chris. I appreciate that. And I, I definitely get that concept. You know, I know and notice on the brewery, distillery thing. It, it's the proposal is to move it from type three to type two, I think. I, I do note that I doubt that that's been our a prohibitive factor in the city. We, we would have had a brewery or two or a brewery. I don't, I don't think it was that they'd have to come before the planning commission and have a meeting, although I do hear the concern. Understand this is, you know, maybe it just, understand this too, that we're we're a small city that struggled, we've had some struggles and we part of that process of turning over a lot of the type threes to type twos and type twos to type ones. Is that we've also seen, we've, we've got some regrets about some of that stuff where we've given up control. And it's like, so we've got some real world experiences here on the ground where we have another, another example of a boutique housing development, eight or 10 units. Shared wall units that were going to be put over the top of a compensatory mitigated wetland. And if it had been a type two application, it would have passed. But fortunately it was a type three and two planning commissioners caught that there's this wetland with city infrastructure on it. I, I'm only telling you this because just to understand where the apprehension comes from for some of us. But I just want you to understand that it's not, I, I actually found that the, the way the report, the way it's all presented there is very I mean, while it's long, it's a very useful and I like the way I can dive into it. But I just wanted you to understand where the concerns are coming from and my personal apprehension to moving things from type three out of our control when I don't necessarily want I don't necessarily want decision authority on it, but I certainly want planning commissioners' eyes on these things because we've had mistakes and we've had to suffer because of that. So that's all. Uh, I've got Shapiro and then we'll go to the other.
I totally agree with you because I feel like there's a lot of things that I really wish we could have looked at that we didn't get to. So I don't want to lose more control. I'd rather gain back some oversight. And I know this might sound weird, but it would be nice, like all these examples of different that we have, like this could go here and this could go there. It'd be nice to have like a space of ours that said, this is what this could look at, look like, instead of all these examples from different towns or whatever that doesn't fit into what we have, would, I would love it to have, okay, this is the space that's available. This is what's going in and this is what you're, this was what could go there. Now, like all these different examples from different towns, I just like, it's overwhelming and it doesn't help me at all. Like I would like to have it like this is what you have to deal with, is what has to be done and this is some examples for it.
Well, I, I agree with you, uh, Commissioner Shapiro, that that would be useful, but I like what, what Chris was just showing us with those images of the way, uh, the, the commercial business highway could be built up. It can be built away from the street versus being built up to it. I thought that was really useful because I can envision Highway 99. Being built with like parking lots all up in front. I mean, if you look at like the music store and the, the quick store down there, that, that sort of thing. So I think that's, um, I, I I may be, uh, you know, the anomaly here, but I kind of like that, the way it's presented. But if you're looking for specific recommendations, um, I, I, I guess I need to get clear on what you're looking for prior to a, uh, a public hearing. Which is another thought I had, it's a little, it's kind of like, um, I guess public hearings would also inform a planning commission's recommendations to the council. So, um, but I, I just want to be clear on what, what sort of recommendations you're looking for.
Um, I would say, I mean, what I've heard so far is really helpful, um, whether it's, you know, particular details that you know, if you, if you looked at, looked at it line by line, I'm, I'd be glad to hear what those are, but you know, just kind of even big picture direction or concerns or, um, you know, understanding the purpose behind some of the recommendations, um.
One of the, one of the things I want to mention too, Chris, uh, just there's, that there is a history of is this planning commission along with the council was unanimous, it wasn't that long ago, but it's, um, in, um, in their wish to see uh, potential commercial, you know, residential buildability and commercial, um, that was, um, you know, what we can do to make it affordable. Um, and so there was like discussions of an incentive program at one point, um, just, I only that's not for you going forward. It's just, I wanted, I'm just trying to fill in gaps on where we've been, um, in the past. Um, I mean, in this case, I don't think it's relevant because the mixed use is already allowed in the CBH. Um, I don't know on CBD, what, where is it at in CBD in general? Is it the same, uh?
Um, it is allowed, um, there's a limit on residential that doesn't have commercial on the ground floor, um, in both places, um. And then there's, there's, um, just different site design requirements, so like height, height limit, um. And there were some requirements around like 50% of the facade had to be in a commercial use on the ground floor that we tried to clarify that that language as well to kind of make it easier to, to figure out mixed use. But it is, it is, yeah, allowed just kind of under some limited circumstances right now.
And then I'm going to go to Commissioner Riley in just a minute, but Alex, I know, uh, if you feel free to jump in when, uh, you want to, this is getting to in the weave for you. Mr. Riley.
But, um, I did not see a change in the central business district in your recommendations that there could be ground floor residential. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, yeah, in the.
And you also, you also wanted to raise the height to 50 feet, right?
Yeah, so that's, that's implementing, uh, um, state requirement. So through this process, there's some state requirements that the city, um, needs to meet due to its
Is that the state?
Population. And so.
HB 2001?
It's, uh, it's the amendments to the transportation planning rule from a few years back, so the, um, city needs to determine they, you know, and is in the process of planning this climate friendly area. That's a more, um, you know, specific area with more of a mix of uses and residential development. And so, um, you know, to the extent that this process can also take care of some of those code changes so that you don't have to go through a separate, you know, amendment process. And if it aligns with the goals of this, you know, in terms of that downtown, that's, that's where you see some of those very like specific numbers sometimes.
Can you specify, of course, Chris, which ones are state driven, uh, in here that, um, that are requirements? Cause that's helpful to know.
Yeah, so it's, um, the quick answer is any of them with an asterisk on the matrix, um. There's a few, um, like especially on the policies, you know, those are, I would say more generally, um, you know, those policies aren't necessarily directly required, but they, they also help kind of further that. They support meeting the requirement.
Clarify, the asterisks are in the furthest left hand column.
Yeah, sorry, thank you.
Asterisks are in the furthest, furthest left hand column.
Okay, great. I see the note on it.
I realize that, but, but you know, we're not, we because of our population, we did not have to meet the standards of 2001. HB 2001, we did for a lot of them, but we didn't have to. And, and, and as far as what's coming down the road from the, the CFAC, I'm not sure we need to be looking at that right now. I'm not sure where we are in that process because we're, we're hoping to make changes in our urban growth boundary.
So to clarify, um, some, some of the HB 2001, uh, requirements did apply to us and some, some didn't. Um, and the CFA CFAC compliance, um, that we, that we do have is due this calendar year.
Okay.
I would like to look.
And just as a, a little bit of a further clarification, if I can add, um, that this project did start before some of those, those, uh, issues were issues of compliance for talent. However, recognizing the staff turnover and the need the talent had for that compliance, during this process, we wrapped some of those in and did some of that work as part of this project to make sure that you would have that available to you rather than having to follow up and have an, uh, uh, another consultant in your zoning code and having to go through this again, either at the same time or immediately following to be able to, to get all those things done at the same time. So we really did try and do as much as we could with this project to get you ahead of the game rather than having you be behind with more things.
Well, but thank you for that because it, it saves you from having to listen to me complain about how many engineer code around and, uh, so I but, uh, but I, I, it is good to have the understanding. I, I do want to, I mean, moving forward, I I intend to get informed on this and I apologize for not having a list of questions. I would actually like to, uh, to follow up on it and, and be able to email uh, to get answers to the questions that way if possible, um, because I would like, um, I mean, I see the benefit in the process and, and, and what we're doing here. I also just have these apprehensions that I just want to make sure that I'm addressing, um, moving forward myself, so.
Well, and just to clarify your question about what our ask was, is that for this meeting that you ask the questions and that you get that we have this conversation and that you have the opportunity to really dig in. And if you do have further questions, I would say, you know, as long as Alex is willing, that you route the questions through him and then he would send them to us and, and you will get a, a, a response back through Alex, um. But that is what this is for, so that you can ask all the questions so that when we can get, when we do get to the hearing, you have all the information that you've asked for, you've had all your questions answered and then we can make a recommendation to the city council for the adoption of the codes that you have decided that you have asked all the questions about and, and know as much as you need to, to be able to recommend.
Right. Uh, Commissioner Riley, go ahead.
I would just regret you.
Yeah.
Chair. And, uh, if, cause I mean, we could be here all night. I'm only halfway through and I could sit, sit here for two hours and ask questions. So if you could get an email address where we could send that.
Let me just, uh, point you to what Kathy just said, which I think is really useful is that Alex, we can help questions through Alex and, uh, and, um, I prefer to, to, uh, punch them out on the keyboard myself, so, um, um, and then, um, yeah, and then just go from there.
Can you review when the hearing is supposed to be? Yeah, lost.
Um, yeah, she's asking when the hearing.
And so if, if I could clarify some of the timing, uh, question. So we did, we noticed DLCD of, uh, the potential for is that Tuesday, the May 27th or the May 28th, I think was what was volunteered to answer the question without. Yeah, um, and so, and partly that was driven by our, our municipal code requires like 45 days notice of that hearing. I think DLCD only requires 30, but, um, I, the reason that I, I did that was primarily because, um, this is a grant funding project. We do have this consulting team available for, to us, I believe, potentially through the end of June, but ideally they, they're hoping to wrap up soon. Now, I don't, that doesn't need to drive our process in any way, but I did want us to have the opportunity to, to take advantage of that, um, at each stage of the process if we could.
The 28th, that's always.
27th, you said 27th or 28th, I wasn't sure which, 27th, yeah, I said 28th, that was wrong.
Last Tuesday event.
And, and we'll lose the consulting team at the beginning of June.
Oh, beginning of June.
We have them until the, like the first week of June, right, Chris?
Yep.
So this wouldn't have been, so the consulting team wouldn't have been before the city council.
Um, actually, our first council meeting, I believe, would be June 2nd. Think we, it's, it's a possibility that we may have the.
Yes, we're, we're getting him in under the wire. That's why I said the beginning of June. Technically, his contract was supposed to end May 31st, but Chris has been very amenable to, uh, to, to work, to fudge that date a little bit.
All right, thank you.
And, uh, sorry, Chair Volkart. I lost your question.
Uh, I don't think I have one.
Okay.
So, yeah, no, I think that, that's fine. We were just ironing out like sort of the timeline. I think she was asking about the timeline. And so, uh, but, um, it sounds like, um, yeah, we have essentially a month to, um, to get our questions answered. And I mean, I don't, uh, you know, I'm the big thing is the design standards, obviously. I think that there, that will bring up a number of questions. I, um, I mean, there's many things that I'll need to get into further detail. Do you guys have additional? Question? Want to ask any right now, Julie, or you, uh, Commissioner Riley, or you just want to? All right.
And Chair, Chair Volkart, uh, um, so one, just to be clear, the, we, staff is very happy to assemble those. Staff is very happy to assemble those questions and make sure that we get, get you all answers on them. I would request if, if you haven't already started, if you could, you know, provide those by the, the T numbers here, that'll help us just keep organized, um, to the extent that you've already begun, don't worry about, uh, you know, redoing work. That's, that's just fine. And I, I think, um, I'm thinking about timeline and what sort of, uh, deadline to give you all is, is mid. Um, we want time to get the answers back. So, um, is the end of next week? Or maybe that following Monday, a reasonable deadline to, to give you all to get those questions?
Put a date on that, uh, would be, so.
May, May 5th, yeah, would that work?
That sounds.
Great.
Sounds good.
Great. Um, and, and to me, I, there were a couple of pretty big picture policy questions here that I, I was curious if there, if there is thoughts of, of the, of the commission that you might share them with the consultants um, tonight because they're, that they would have some cascade. So one, one is the, the question, uh, of housing, right? And so a, as I read what's being proposed here is that it would allow housing and just, I think all these districts with, with this ground floor 50% requirement, that 50%, 50%, I think in the actual downtown business uh, zone, it's, it's a little stricter than that. Um, it's, uh, it limits, anyway, um, but just if that, just, uh, curious if that general approach makes sense to you all. One of the things that occurred to me was there may be some areas that the city would countenance, uh, pure residential development in this area, but I was curious about the, the, the commission's thoughts on, on those topics.
And, and you're saying that it's, uh, residential housing that is not mandated by, uh, law, obviously.
Correct, just what's, yeah, what would be allowed.
And I, I'll answer that one to start because I, I need to give it some thought because as uh, it really was not that long ago, we had a unanimous commission, a unanimous council that, um, was like, hey, we could essentially leverage our residential buildability and commercial, um, in order to obtain, um, possibly obtain, uh, affordable housing. Now, whatever the Senate bill was, kind of did away with that, right? Because it said you can take your commercial and go affordable housing with it. And the plan just bypassed the planning commission, right? What bill, is that a house bill? I'm sorry, I'm testing you, okay?
No, it's, it's fine, right? But I do not, I am not, I do not know the answer.
Right. And so my point is, is that I, um, I need to give it some thought myself personally because, uh, it, it's been a long time coming that we were like thinking that, um, we don't want to sacrifice our commercial for residential. And if we were giving, granting residential buildability, it'd be nice to, um, get some affordable housing out of it. That's a lot. So that's another thing to think.
But there was a house bill that tell me what did?
Oh, that, that, I forget which bill and Kathy, if you or Chris want to weigh it. That is that, uh, where I thought if you had a commercial parcel that you went entirely affordable residential housing on, that you could just automatically bypass the planning commission and public hearings and go to, go to go and build.
I think it's, it's for, I don't remember the number, um, but if, if there's commercial zones that don't allow residential, yes, if it's if it hits us, if all the units hit a certain affordability level, I want to actually, I don't, I don't know. I want to say 60 or 80% area median income, then the house bill, 33 to 85, um, 60% area median income is the, the income target. Then, um, it's sort of, um, yeah, it's a by right use basically. It still has to follow, you know, this general code of the city and things like that, but generally what happens is if there's like multifamily standards from a different zone, those just get applied. Uh, but in a case of like an area where you already allow residential uses, it doesn't, it's not really a factor.
Thank you. And I want to go back to Alex for more of the, you, you had the, uh, other, uh, general framework.
Thanks. And, um, it might be helpful for, I think I could get this to you all this week, so you would be aware of it as you're developing your comments. Art of mind thinking is informed by discussions that we've been having about the Gateway Project. And, you know, and I gave some comments to this team on this, on this front as well. We have, I, I, I believe the right aspirations for this corridor. On the other hand, if we exclude everything that's short of our ideal, we could essentially lock in what we've got for some period of time, and there may be some intermediate development that's going to make the ultimate vision that what we want to see more likely and more possible, if we allow some things that aren't exactly what we want to see. An example I might offer is Phoenix Industrial Studios. Phoenix Industrial Studios is not adequately oriented to 99 to meet this code as proposed. But I do think that's the kind of development that both is that the market is ready to provide on 99, that would get more activity, that would move us in the right direction. And so, I, my comments will, will be about, are we, are we going too far in terms of eliminating intermediate steps that, that take us in the right direction?
And you'll provide those, Chris?
Yeah, I can, I can share those with you all this week, so you have the benefit of those before, before you write. So it's primarily around allowability of residential and more flexibility and orientation to, to the, to 99, are my thoughts.
That sound good? Is that okay with you guys, Chris, Kathy?
Fantastic, yeah.
And, and Chris, we could talk more offline.
Yeah.
When we go through the actual public hearing, it might be easier to go in order of the code rather than in order of your strategy.
Strategies, yeah.
But anyway, we appreciate your, your, your presentation and your work, and we'll look forward to the next discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, the questions and discussion, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate all of your time. Full disclosure, in my not day job, which this is, I'm also a planning commissioner, commissioner in my town, so I understand your concerns and your, your desire for control and, and wanting to not let go and let go where you need to. So, thank you for, for your, your time, and we'll be, we'll be back, we'll look forward to your questions.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jim, hang on. Oh, I'm writing, I don't know. Thanks, thanks you all for, for that, we have a bit of analysis to conduct here, and thanks Alex for getting that stuff to us and, and setting the stage for the big changes. So now we're, let's roll on to what are really more updates, I think, with, we've got three, with self-storage, outdoor storage, and gas station regulation.
Thanks, Chair, and I'll, I'll just mention that we've got these public hearings lined up, and some of these topics are already broached in the TGM proposal. I think there's an opportunity, if there's, you know, consensus about what might be some steps, even if we don't have consensus about all the steps, to take some actions, you know, over the next, in concert with, with these highway code amendments, to, to take some steps on self-storage. So, with that, we asked Ani to put together a short presentation with, with some examples of different methods that some other jurisdictions have used to tackle these issues. Ani, please.
And I would ask to look for possible solutions to.
Mike, real close, yeah.
Possible solutions for like uses that are within close proximity and along the highway or Pacific Highway and, and the commercial districts. And so, I took the question to the Oregon Planning Network, and it's a group of individuals across the state and asked for their feedback and to see what some cities are doing in regards to restrictions or design standards that will either limit or restrict certain uses within those districts. And so, the first slide is your, the gas station buffer, and they took and located all of the gas stations and then put them in a map, so you could see how close proximity they were. And they also created buffers at two different distances. The first buffer is 100, or excuse me, 1,000 feet, and the second is 2,000 feet for, just for visual context, so you could, if you were to make design standards, you can kind of determine which would be appropriate.
And so, to be clear, so, so sometimes the A-code approach would be to say, no, no, you can only have one of a certain kind of use within a certain distance, acknowledging that, you know, we need some of these uses in the region, but we, the, we don't want to see multiple of them right next to each other.
Which one becomes the non-conforming, does it go to gate built? If you were codifying their non-conformance?
That's a great question, I have no idea, write it down.
I, I do have a question, sorry, I'm not interested. But my understanding was that another gas station was going on Valley View to make it number three. Remember hearing that, that there was going to be?
Pre-application, something I heard about, right?
Yes, so there, there, the old truck stop is, has filed a pre-application to pay, to pay. So there would be sort of three, three different gas stations right around that, that side street there, I can't remember what that light is.
I know, we were talking about across the street.
Yeah, across the street, yes.
And, and so there, at the old Walmart, there's, there's no current active development application.
Yeah, we did hear that.
We were told that they were going to be.
Yeah.
And you can't say nothing south of the river, south of, uh, Valley View, I guess.
I know, but I.
Yeah.
The second map provides you the self-storage unit, and currently there's four within the area, and then it provides you the same buffers, the 1,000 feet and 2,000 feet for those four storage facilities. When I put the question out to the Oregon Planning Network, we received responses from several cities and consultants, and also from DLCD. The Community Development Director from Lepine had said that they, they didn't, they had an issue with too many of the storage facilities being built in their industrial park, and so they wanted a five acre, or excuse me, yes, a five acre minimum for storage facilities, basically eliminating the possibility for them to meet those standards, because I think they're.
They said their, their lots are up from five acres, but you needed five acres.
Oh, okay.
So it hurt. The next response was from the City of Sisters, where they created like buffers, and there was distance minimums that they couldn't approve another facility within that close proximity. And so, they provided us a sample of their code, and the minimum lot size for a service station shall be, and it was 12,000 square feet. And then, they cannot be approved on a property in the zone that is within 1,000 feet.
Service state.
It's just samples that we could use for either.
But, but these samples, is one is for many, many storage yourself, storage, and one is for, yes.
That's not, that, they wouldn't, nobody would consider that a takings? I mean, like, I've got this property, it's zone commercial, or like, you know, but you're not going to let me use it? That nobody has pushed back on that as a taking?
I, I don't, I don't think it completely eliminates the potential for somebody to do that. I do think it gives the, the city a lot better of a defense to say, we're not, our, our intent wasn't to diminish the value of our prop, your property, our intent was to have orderly regulation of these kinds of uses. So, I, I think you're right, that there's still that possibility, that we're trying to, we would be trying to manage that.
I imagine in Lepine, if you bought a bunch of parcels and wanted to consolidate to be your five acres worth of. Maybe you can get that through, but, yeah.
The response from DLCD was that you don't restrict or eliminate the option. And they made suggestions on using samples for smaller gas stations, and then kind of incorporating them into the side of other businesses to allow for other businesses to not be limited, or restricting them.
The gas station and bus stop, I saw one of them in France, it's really bizarre, I mean, it's like on the sidewalk. And it was, I've never seen anything for a big flower.
Well, you're not from out like that, with, you're still sidewalk.
And then, the last response was from a contractor, consultant, who agreed that it's not best to eliminate the uses and try to promote a design standard that they would have to abide by.
Could you elaborate on how that would work, what design standard?
Well, yeah, so if I could give off an example, so we're talking about allowing residential if there's a minimal of 50% commercial on the ground floor. You could do something very similar, right? Say, storage use is not, is not a commercial use, it's a storage use. But if you want, if you want to do storage, then you have to have at least 50%, 50% commercial on your first floor.
That was the end of the responses that I received from the planning network.
Since this is before the council, so is this, is the council going to work with you guys and the attorney to come up? Or what's it?
So, Ani has been discussing with, with Dave Lowman, the, this stuff, and we will continue to do that. City Council requested we, that we come up, come back to you all and get your recommendation on what, what you thought a good approach would be. So, what I'm interested in hearing potentially tonight from you all, if there were any of these approaches that seemed particularly more likely or more attractive to you all, or any that seem less likely or less attractive to you all, and then that would give us, you know, some, some marching orders of which, which potentially develop further and conceivably even ask the OTAC team to include them in the code language that you'd look at on May 27th.
Can I, can I ask you this, Alex? If you're trying to, is it, is it more effective, and when I say effective, I guess in, litigation proof, to be consistent, like, with, if you're incorporating a bunch of design standards, it seems like the design standards route doesn't jump out as much as like drawing circles on the map, although, like, to look on the map, but is that, I mean, I guess we'll, we'll hear from Dave, what he has to say about that.
Yeah, I'll definitely run that past him, I suspect very much like you do, that the answer would be yes, that design standards are, are more, less likely to suffer a takings challenge than, than a buffer or an area exclusion.
I was just going to say that of, of the three options, not counting the LCV, that, that the design standards would be the hardest to write and most complicated to administer of all of them, even though probably the outcome would be best of, of these options. But I would think, just as far as least likely to get legal pushback, I would think that the acreage minimum would be simpler. Design standards, I mean, think about when you go through the architectural review stuff, I mean, design standards are fun, but they're complicated.
Well, I just mean, like, if you're, like, if you want to do self-storage, you can incorporate 50% affordable housing, and.
Well, it will probably discourage some people.
Well, I'm not looking to discourage anyone, I want affordable housing.
Not, I'm not saying about discouraging storage, it's not affordable housing.
Well, no, no, yeah, that's right, I think they're going to build affordable housing and storage. For the record. I want to make that clear.
Soon.
So we can.
Well, so, yeah, I mean, Alex is looking for just some ideas on, like, what we favor as far as the approach.
Be the most.
But I, I would be curious what the attorney says and to inform that, you know, but.
That's what I'd like to hear from the attorney.
I mean, after seeing Phoenix and what we have on Highway 99, with this, so discouraging what we have, and, and seeing Phoenix where it's kind of, I don't know, from my point of view, a little haphazard, right? I think design would be really important, I know it's complicated, but I think if we want a nice looking community, I think the design standards would be the better way to go. I don't know if we can get there, but I just, aesthetically, I just, it is, I agree, absolutely, I agree.
So, attorney opinion on? Will be good?
Yeah, I think it would, I think it would be great if we could get some good options rolled into this process for this upcoming public hearing. And, you know, I don't think, just looking at these buffers, I, I, I don't want another storage unit complex near or north of Valley View, nor do I think Talent needs a South Talent gas station. Quick take there.
South Talent, Charles.
That helpful, Alex?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, then we're, we've got two more items, um, on the discussion items, and that's city council work plan and the, yeah.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners, so the, I think I'll give you the really short version, and then see if you like the, the, the longer version, but the really short version of this work plan is that I, I heard both from this body and council and many others in the community, that there's a high desire to get to these Title 17, Title 18 updates. And so, really, the only change between this and what was last year's work plan is this one puts those Title 17, Title 8, well, particularly the Title 18 updates, I probably should say 17 as well. It puts them higher in the, in the order of priorities. Um, it puts them higher in in the in the uh order of priorities. Um, prior to going after a land swap or another uh another uh method of urban growth boundary expansion. So that we can be sure to to get those, get, uh, if we're opening new areas for development, that it's uh developing in ways that we. Uh, under the code that we want to have.
That's interesting. When you frame it that way. I mean, that's, yeah. So in lieu of um, in lieu of uh urban growth boundary expansion, we'll tackle the Title seventeen, eighteen parking lot and that issue's parking parking lot. No, no, that I bet it just frames it for me. Makes me question the importance that um that the council's directed that, so um. I'm sorry, I'm looking for something on uh. I just wanna look at them.
Yeah, I'll just um. Uh, offer that the uh. Urban Forestry made a recommendation some time ago. That the uh city direct staff to uh um. Hire a consultant um with experience in writing uh urban forestry code, tree code specifically. Uh, in conjunction with the uh. With the Title seventeen, eighteen uh revisions more generally. Uh, the the language in there concerning requirements around trees is dispersed in. Many different sections. Uh, some sections are verbatim with each other, some sections are almost verbatim, but not quite. The language is not clear. Um, it uh is not easily enforceable and has not been. Uh, well, enforced, um, and so I hope that. We can get to a place where we have uh, you know, clear language that is enforceable and that, you know. Uh, fosters the kind of community that we wanna have in terms of our uh tr- tree canopy and the kind of uh. Urban tree canopy that we need for climate resiliency. And, you know, in the previous uh presentation about Highway ninety nine, they emphasized. The value uh of of street trees and and uh how they uh, you know, affect. Pedestrian and and bicycling and commercial activity. Um, and. So I just wanted to uh put that on the table as um. One of my priorities and a and a recommendation that the Urban Forestry Committee has made. No. It was not recently. Okay.
I I will note, I mean, tree code is the first item in the paren- parentheses after parentheses after adopt Title eighteen code updates on. On this document. So that's certainly been captured by my predecessors. Whether there's value in knowledge above and beyond what. Forestry Committee already has and the consultants, I I'm not totally sure. I think you all may. You know, maybe more expeditious to hear from you all than educate somebody else on your concerns.
Yeah, well, um, just for a little more background, we started into attempting to. Um, and we spent quite a bit of time redlining our existing code and um. Kind of felt like it at some point it hit a level of complexity in which we felt like it was beyond the volunteer pay grade. And what I would like to do is take the those redlined documents and hand them over to the professional and say, hey, we worked on this. You know, you can see where we were going with some of these things. Um, you know, take it from here, please.
The the tree code language makes the Old Town District language look relatively clearly. I I wanted to add to uh the part of the Title seventeen, so Alex, what's this element uh F? Which is our public facilities. Element from the cop plan. Uh, we had a hearings officer, despite being, turns out a really unique character. Um, he was a really good hearings officer. Um. But. At some point, we had a ruling or he ruled that our um that element had not been properly. Incorporated into uh the the code. Therefore, we could not rely on it and then stop me if I. That we couldn't rely on it um as criteria for our appeals or applications because. It was so deficient because we had not properly incorporated it, became a really odd thing. So then every time I would see. I just wanted you to know that, that's one just kind of floating out there. And element F is what provides the ingress address, the dual ingress address. Some of the, which I, so it might be by design that it was never incorporated. I mean, I don't want to be conspiratorial, but it, you know, certainly makes things harder for developers. So that's just an FYI on that. Do you have more on the work plan then that you, okay?
No, I don't think so. That that was the key, key takeaway. Yeah.
Okay, and then the final item is uh some general compliance, land use compliance, so.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and so um, uh Chair Commissioners, um. Your indulgence, what I'm gonna do is run through a couple of the items that Chair Volkart or or he shared that uh he thought there was interest in. I'm gonna stay at a pretty high level in terms of just letting you all know what the status is. Um, rather than get into the details of what we believe or what what, um, because this is an open hearing. Um, so if there's interest in in diving in deeper, that I'm certainly happy to do that. Um, and if there are other issues that you all wanna make sure they're on our radar, that those would be. Wel- welcome the opportunity to to learn about them. So um, in terms of uh the the Truck and Travel Center. Um, where we have active conversations going, our attorney, the attorney for the current owner. Attorney for City of Ashland and attorney for uh for Freshwater Trust about what the uh. What the resolution needs to be. Part of what was impacted was the shading uh that City of Ashland has committed to do for their. Uh wastewater discharge permit. So uh they have certainly stepped into a hornet's nest there, more ways than one. Um, in terms of Squid Auto, um, our code compliance uh has concluded as far as. They can tell that the the home occupation is properly permitted. We're looking at the land use of the West Valley, the West Valley View law right now. Um, and in terms of the U-Haul at uh.
So what is the status on? On the west, I'm not.
Of that, we're, we're looking at whether we, whether they, they have no land use application currently. So we're looking at whether they need one and whether we should go for code compliance on that. Right? If they were simply parking a single vehicle there occasionally, clearly would not need land use. Authorization to do that. They're parking multiple cars with temporary fence. So I think that's a little bit of. In my mind, currently in a gray area, just in a gray area in my mind. I'm not sure whether, whether we. Want to and well, first of all, whether we believe that it requires uh a land use action. Um, and then the next step would be what level of uh compliance we want, we want to go through to drive them to. Request a land use action.
They just went in there and put that fence up and the trucks are parked there and there's no permits or anything.
That's correct.
And that's in our gateway. It makes me insane driving by there, I just. What? And then a U-Haul, I like livid.
Yeah. Um, and then uh in terms of the U-Haul, um, they have, what they have told us is that they're. No longer pursuing any permit and they are planning to relocate on around May one. And then.
Did they try to apply for?
They were, they were um discussing coming for pre-application.
They put a little building in there, they brought all the U-Haul trucks and it was just like here. And I mean, anyway.
And how do we let that happen? How do we just let a business go in there with no permits, no business license, no nothing? How do we let this happen? It's just.
Well, so at a, at a high level, right, our our code and code compliance is not law enforcement. We do not have the ability to go in and physically stop folks from doing things unless. Unless there's a life safety issue, in which case a building official could come in and and, you know, red tag or.
So it has to be life threatening, shut them down, they just can build wherever they want without any. I don't.
Well, so that's, I wouldn't say that, but there's no construction involved in any of these things that we're talking about either.
Well, they're, so they put up their metal buildings and there's junk everywhere and then there's another metal drive-through thing. They just put up a building without any. Business license or permits. I just don't know. I'm sorry. It's our down, it's our core and it's such an eyesore.
If, if I could say, I I underst- I understand, I uh am with you a hundred percent. I. Do not have the time in my day to deal with folks who are coming in and doing unpermitted work. Um, but I'm making it because we have to. But it is, it is, uh, it is, um. Is not the case that it is clear, easy and simple. It's very simply see somebody doing something.
So how do we make a change to this? It's like, what do we do so the future people can't just come in, like, put something up without any permits or any business license? I mean, what do we do in the future to prevent this?
Well, so I'm I'm not, I don't have a full answer for you on that and I wasn't preparing one, but. I I will share with you, in this case, that individual, I think, did get some bad advice. Um, from a representative of the city. Um, we had, we're having a lot of transition in the planning department. Um, so I was not particularly eager about bringing the hammer down on him immediately. He's lost several thousand dollars. He's a small business owner. Um, so there's, you know, the these, these are human beings. Uh, trying to go on with their lives and and so it, I I'm not gonna use every lever that I have in every case.
Is it the same problem that, oh, that doesn't sound important or was it?
I don't, I don't believe so. I believe those are two different processes.
Mr. Riley.
So, but you said that the home occupation uh for Squid was.
I I believe, I believe that there's no other code compliance outstanding issue.
Okay, so I did talk to Amanda about it and she told me. He had come in and somebody here had given him a home occupation license, but but. Eighteen one seven zero oh three oh for home occupation licenses C says uses. That will not be permitted for a home occupation include any form of motor vehicle and or engine repair. Period. It's like, here's, yeah. So whoever gave them their their approval. Didn't know what was in the code, so I hope going forward, there's some more training around that.
Respectfully, if it's a auto repair business, that would be news to me.
Any form of motor vehicle and or so. There's, yeah, it's, I know they've already got it and the city gave it to them. I'm just saying in the future. It's pretty clear that you're not supposed to be selling cars on the neighborhood streets.
Well, I I, I mean, I I think this is probably something that we should be looking at when we get to Title eighteen, so. Yeah, I I think even if, regardless of whether this is uh in compliance or not. We probably need to take a look at this 'cause I don't think I would want an auto dealer next to my house.
Like it doesn't last forever, right?
Yeah, I think that's correct, yeah.
So when they go to renew it, maybe re, I mean, it seems like we've got approved under false.
I I, I'm not sure, I, the first time you read that language, it sounded like it was repair to me.
It says any form of motor vehicle. And or engine repair.
That sounds like motor vehicle or engine repair. Yeah, well, uh, my understanding is that they are a car delivery and dealer operation. So I think maybe that. Code should not just speak about repair.
But I I do understand that we can't change our minds after we've made our choice, so.
Well, a business license would be, need to be renewed for sure. And so if if we think we made a mistake on the land use side, that that.
That'd be an opportunity.
Okay, good. Um, and.
I was gonna also mention two ten North Pacific.
Oh, great. Yeah, that's good.
So we, um, again, I think this is a situation where what is there was approved by staff. Um, but um, I think we have a good solution and that uh we'll be using the OED grant to put in. Better street trees, street trees that are provide more. That we uh want. Yeah, and the coffee shop just uh just. It, actually, they they did plant trees that were, they were permitted to do. Um, one of those trees by my read was on the list and one of them was not.
One, there should be a bunch of them, right? There's like eight along the.
There.
Cause that whole road, how long?
There, yeah, I think there are four that were the type that was not on the list and two at the ends. That are probably more related to the residential, like on the other side of the driveways, that, anyway.
Understand they're dividing that property?
Uh, I'm, I'm not aware of that. They they, it's certainly maybe, I'm not aware of that.
Two ten North Pacific Highway, where the old good.
We got a letter and we're neighbors and it said, that's what I thought it said, they wanted to divide the. And I didn't understand, it is, it says the old good, it's called, it's called Goodnight Property, whatever. And it's, so there's a.
They have submitted an application for a partition. Uh-huh, and it's um to divide it into two parcels.
I don't understand how they can, it's really developed.
At this time, I, all I did was review the application for completeness. And then we sent notice for comment, so I haven't actually begun the review. Um. So I apologize, I don't have all the details.
I just couldn't understand.
I think I'll swing by and take a look at that at some point, just to.
Only thing I can think of.
Yeah, and then, you know, Alex and I talked and it's then, you know, it was a comedy of errors on this thing. It's just like. The planning commission and staff both missed the orientation of the building. Um, but of course, the applicant. Proposed an a- an application that orients the building away from the highway. Um, but then we just missed the final order. That was my question for you, Alex. Do you know? Because I was reviewing emails even in January of twenty four when Chair Riley, Riley was chairing. Staff said, hey, they won't, they won't get a CFO until they consult with Urban Forestry and they. Plant the right street trees. And then when I was chair, I was still told the same. Was there anything left behind for you to pick up the pieces on on that or no?
No, the the last thing documentation that I could find was the minutes of that of, I don't, and I'm not sure which. Meeting it was off the top of my head, but the minutes reflected that they had requested permission to not plant street trees. Meeting it was off the top of my head, but the minutes reflected that they had requested permission to not plant street trees at all. Because of concerns about conflicts with utilities. And my read that what the minutes implied. Was the direction to to consult with Urban Forestry commit- committee was about that utility conflict. And then it appears to me that they they, the applicant acceded, acknowledged that they didn't really have a utility conflict. So they're. They were not requested to go to the Urban Forestry Committee.
And well, and I, and um I'll I'll address that too in propositions and remarks, but thanks for dealing with that. I talked to uh Commissioner Clark and realized like. The OWEB grant will cover replacement of the trees for no cost to the applicant. And so. They, even though they put the wrong street trees in, and staff recruited and Alex took care of it, it's gonna happen. And so that's, that's good news. I just can't believe it's taken this much to get uh this through, and it did. Um so thanks for following up with that, Alex. Um, yeah, and then uh so let's just move on to, there's no, oh, subcommittee reports, there's no subcommittees. Uh propositions, I'll I'll say, I'll jump ahead and say assignments of representatives, counsel. Even though I went to the council, I've nothing to report back that hasn't been covered, I think, already. I think, um propositions and remarks from the commission, though, if you have that remarks. Uh Commissioner Ryan.
I I've been working on a a book, a notebook for new commissioners. And and I want, and and I would like to ask the city, I I have all these different kinds of tabs in here and I. And I'd like to make one nice notebook and then let the planning commission approve it or add to it or whatever. So we have something to give new commissioners. And then I'd like to work on one for uh the chair too, but I would like to ask. Ask you if you would ask staff to, if I could have tabs that match.
He wants matching tabs, Alex.
Before you get matching tabs, let us. Let it, let us beat it up first and. And then as far as the chair, the the manual for the chair, let's schedule that for December.
I've been working on this one though. I found, I found a bunch of stuff.
Well, thanks for doing that. That's great. Rather than just handing somebody a, here's your code or go read, uh there's a training manual. Or a a directional manual, I like.
You should do a video for, just a short video for people that are thinking about applying.
Oh, boy.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a quick comment here, uh just because I want to get feedback from the commission on. If you see the interpretation differently than I do, moment. Um the, on the plantings discussion, um this Alex is right, the applicant came before the city and said. Or in a type two process, or no, it was type three, because it was handled by planning. That's, that was the distraction that distracted everybody from building orientation, but they didn't want to plant trees because they were worried about them. Uh and actually, they didn't say they didn't want to plant trees. They wanted to plant them not where they were in the planter strip. They wanted to plant them somewhere else. And come to find out, if you listen to the hearing, um that what they were essentially saying is, well, actually, the. Pacific Power, what's the name, new name of the power company or uh? Or maybe it was Vista, the gas company, what's that? Whatever company they were talking to, they said, well, the regular person's going, and we said, we have to consult with Climate Falls. And so this person in Climate Falls was like, well, hey, the the cable might be damaged, so don't plant trees. Um and and so what I quickly realized listening to that, it's like, this is a non-issue of light. And when you read the code, it's like, there's parts that say, you know, you shouldn't plant anything to damage utilities. It's like, well, that's a no brainer. Um but the code says, plant, street trees shall be planted in planter strips on all arterial. And collect their streets for all developments that are subject to land division or site designer view. Except that street trees may be planted in planter wells as provided in subsection E of this section. Street trees are encouraged but not required for local streets. When provided on local streets, street trees shall be in planter strips. Additional requirements, yada, yada. My interpretation of that is. You have to plant on collectors and arteries. You have to plant street trees.
Right.
But when you plant them, don't plant them in a way or plant a species that damages your utilities. It's really not that, you know, and uh I just think at the time, so for to. What they're, they were really asking for, I think, is a variance in planting trees. And staff just said, well. You need to plant the trees unless you can show us that it's going to damage the utilities. It's like, no, no, no. They need to plant the trees and they need to do it in a way where they don't damage the utilities. And if they think otherwise. I, my interpretation is they're applying for a variance to that code language. So if anybody. Thinks I've got that wrong, please correct me at any point, um preferably before a hearing. This is, this is just eighteen point one fifteen point oh four oh street trees, so. And it was just, that was from the final order, but I I just realized it was sort of a non-secular. Uh discussion to answer or it just didn't make sense. Anyway, thanks for bearing with me on that. Uh propositions and remarks additional. Um Alex, do you have anything? Okay. I'm gonna adjourn the meeting at eight forty-five. Thanks, you guys.
Wow.
Thank you all.